America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two set of minutes to approve tonight. Let's look at the January 9th, January 9th Board meeting. Need a motion to approve?
Some moves.
And second?
Second.
Anything? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is past budget meeting, January 23rd.
Make a motion to approve?
And second?
Second.
Any changes, anything that we need to look at? None of the material here, no. Got some issues from the, talk about the tentative budget here and business. Any changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those who are in this past? Presentations, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community. Then, no? Alright. Report from Code Enforcement, Mr. Tetro is excused. My report. First, I'd like to congratulate the DPW crew for successfully completing a six-hour course on 7th February for confined space safety at the North Country Chamber offices. This is a very important insurance issue and will allow the crew to do the water tank cleaning ourselves this year, saving the village about $3,000 that we spent last year cleaning the tank. I'd like to do this on an annual basis. It really seems to make a huge difference in the product that we have. I also would like to clean the wells again this year. Set money aside in the budget to do that. It really makes a big difference in the quality of the water that we are selling, are giving to our customers. Spoke with legislator McManus on the 7th of February about establishing a recreation trail using the old Rutland Railroad bed between the villages of Champlain and Rouse's Point. Harry's been here and talked to us about it in the past. With grant approval and receiving easements from landowners, a summer 2013 starting date is anticipated. Let's just, Slater McManus and I talked about, and he is looking for village support for this project as the funding process continues. It looks like our contribution will be minimal, mostly in-kind services with the DPW crew. But it will take some, it will take some time to get the easements from the village of Rouse's Point to the school. And there will be a spur created along the old railroad bed that goes directly to the school so that bike riders and walkers and et cetera, they won't have to cross that road way down and then come back. It sounds like a good deal. If you want, I don't know if, were they copied with the pictures and stuff? No, I think I, if you want, I'll get copies for you of the tentative plan. Asphalt materials and delivery prices have risen slightly. Keyword there is slightly. With bids through the Clinton County Highway Department, this will result in a manageable cost increase to resurface Church Street this paving season. Obviously Church Street is of concern. It's getting worse and worse as the winter goes by. And we will, we will get that taken care of as soon as the, as soon as we can get the favors from the county in here and get it repaired. There is a rabies clinic for dogs, cats, and ferrets, free for Clinton County residents, Tuesday, February 28th, 6:00 to 8:30. City of Plattsburgh Public Works Building is on the new base, 215 Idaho Avenue. All pets must be at least three months old. Pets need their first vaccination by four months of age. Bring your pets, vaccination record, certificate. All animals must be on a leash or in a carrier to be admitted to the clinic. For more information, please call (565) 4870, the Clinton County Health Department, or on their website. And finally, we'll take an informal look at the tentative 2012-2013 budget for the village of Champlain, pending board approval at a later date. When must we have this approved to go to the state? March, May, April?
In April.
In April, okay. Pending board approval at a later date, this tentative budget includes, and we'll look at this briefly, tax rate reduction of 24 cents to $4.20 tax rate. No increase in water and wastewater rates for village users for the second year in a row. And we are well below the New York State tax cap of 2% this year. In fact, I think we're in the minus. So this budget, I think, and as we look at it briefly, take it home with you, this is, we must look at it now because we have to have a report into the comptroller's office by the end of February. So that's, that's my report. Trustee Trobley?
Again, I'd like to echo your comments to the DPW crew for completing this confined space. It really is a very valuable thing for these guys to have this, especially with all the OSHA regulations and you just never know what could happen in the village. That's a very valuable thing and congratulations to all of them. The other thing with the upcoming paving that we're looking at, in driving around, I've started noticing that we're starting to have some issues on Elm Street. We've got a couple of spots on Elm Street that I'm rather discouraged with considering we just paved it. There's quite a large spot in front, I think it's where the old paving met the new paving. There's a very large spot that looks like it's down one layer.
I, I don't know if Mr. Rabbit, when he cleaned the driveway up there, if he caught it, or we're gonna have to mill it and reseed it.
Yeah. And that's the other thing is when, when the county comes to do Church Street, because we've just spent so much time and money on that road, you know, we could look at that. And then down in front of the funeral home, it's a good-sized hole, but it looks like it's fairly deep. Just before the curve to go onto the bridge. So, just before Oak Street, actually, if you're heading towards the bridge.
It's not a valve box?
I'm sorry?
It's not a valve box on the corner?
No, I think I moved it.
No, it's in the, it's in the north.
Yeah, it's right in the center line.
So again, and I think it's something bigger than what could be taken care of with paving. So just, you know, starting to look at some spots.
I know I had them patched on Church Street and stuff.
Yeah. This, again, if we're gonna have the county helping us with the paving, if we could look at some of these areas, if they're going to be on Elm Street anyway, that maybe this is something that looks like it's probably gonna need maybe a little more than cold patch. Thanks, sir.
I have to go by Elm Street because we gotta put a turnaround at the end of proceed way, a bus turnaround.
We have to do that?
Yes. The buses won't run unnecessarily.
Right, but...
For the safety of the kids, it needs to...
Well, I know, but they could walk to the end of the street.
Kindergarten.
No, because they're changing that, where they're not having the bus stops before we spend that kind of money. We really need to look into that. I, I think that's absolutely insane.
That was per a discussion with Mr. Minor, school was transportation.
Well, yeah, but that'd be nice for him, but...
Call him again and ask.
You know, there are a lot of parents, they don't go down where the trailer park is and there's kids down there.
What do they protect there?
Parents, parents walk their kids down on the corner. I don't think that's up to the taxpayers to do. Mom and dad can put them in a car and bring them to the end of the road and wait the bus. That's a big expense.
I'll give Carl a call. Actually, it should've been done when that road was put in the first place. I'll call, I'll call Carl and see what we can, see what we can work on. Okay, thanks, Kevin. Trustee President?
Just a short report tonight, that I'd like to acknowledge the DPW crew for keeping up with the roads the past couple of months. We all know it's, hasn't been like the winter we're used to, and with this ice, luckily they've got the salt down, the treatment, roads fortunately have quite interesting weather patterns, but just like those now if their village is on the road.
Thank you. Trustee Trobley?
Thanks. This month in regards to means, attended meeting with Greg Edmerton of the town of Champlain regarding the forming a water district on the service road, which are still doing investigative work with the engineering firm. Attended a planning board meeting regarding property line adjustments on property on Oak Street, which is approved, and an IDA meeting, which was regarding annual election of officers and positions for analodics. Nothing really too outstanding there. They are looking at, there's been a request to return the project to the owners, so they'll be into that, and that would be the Miramar Mall properties.
Put it back on the tax rules?
Yes.
Also, the contracts were signed for the shared services committee to get, to get Bernie and Care, Bernie and Carr started on that project with the bound water district.
Oh, for the water, that's correct.
That's moving forward. Very good. Any else?
Nope, that's all.
How soon are they looking for the taxes to go back up to Miramar?
Well, they've gotta do a study, all the documentation, it sounds quite extensive.
It's not being used for its original use, I would've thought that would've reverted sooner than that.
The end of the program, yeah. Should've, it should've been. So they have a legal firm now that's going through the process of getting property transferred back over to the original owner. The idea takes the ownership per se, and then once that, once that's accomplished, it'll go back on the tax rules.
Well, they, they requested us, we have to hope that they have a plan, you know, selling it or let it use it, some form.
Well, they do have some businesses in there.
It's, it's hitting in bad shape until Harry is...
I don't know.
Trustee Gary?
I don't have a lot this month, a couple of things. Bingo is restarted again at St. Mary's, it took the month off. So anyone who's interested in being able to go out, we're the only game in town. First Monday of the month, early bird games start, I believe it's 5:30, the regular bingo starts at 7:00. So if you're interested in doing that. Saturday, we had a little community pass-a-plate, activities in the gym for the kids, that went really well, and we'll be continuing that on a monthly basis, which was really kinda nice. So anyone looking to get out and do something different, it was good food, it worked out perfect, we had just the right amount of desserts, the right amount of main dishes. I don't know how it always works out, but it does when you do these pass-a-things. It was really quite nice. And I've gotten a lot of feedback going out and around for signatures for running for trustee and comments on the sidewalks that thank you for clearing those. It's been, I know, very difficult with the constant warming and the ice skating rink. We have a nice rink in the whole yard up at St. Mary's, so it's discontinual, so thank the guys for that, because that is very difficult with them going up and down and, you know, and you're actually seeing people back on them instead of in the road. I know for a while there was no options. So that is amazing to get those cleared away. So people are very appreciative of that, so wanna make sure the guys are aware of it. And that's all I have this month.
As per your suggestion last month, the DPW crew have started flooding that area down on Main Street.
Excellent.
Last few days have been cold enough to form ice, I don't know if it's gonna continue for the rest of the week, but it started the flooding process.
Great. It'd be good to know, because next week, kids are on vacation, so we can pass the word.
It'll be available for next week.
Let me know how it's...
Well, if we get it based on, I think it'll hold at night, and then we'll be alright during the day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Have the report from the clerk treasurer, please?
Everyone has their Spencer Avenue reports for January. Yes, yeah, I do remember.
Notice that any other percentages remaining are at the 50% mark, because we are just a little over halfway through the year. And I think so far the budget has been, the budget has been close in some areas, but very good in others. Bet yourselves on the back, you've done a good job.
Chief of Work.
Alright. The presentation of the warrant, Karen?
We need to add one invoice for E.J. Prescott, to come out of F 8310.2, $2,043.29. It's for water meters.
$2,043.29?
Yes.
16.
Am I gonna put this back stock, or am I just gonna put this here?
Yes, that's back stock.
Okay.
I want these meters, these meters will re-off our guns, but these meters are the new meters, the upcoming meters, that if we ever change over to electronic, these got a 20-year warranty on them, and they'll automatically re-off themselves.
Okay.
And actually, they're cheaper than that.
And those work with what we have now?
They work with what we have now, yes.
Nice.
But if we ever do in the next five, six years, switch over to the electronic, we don't have to replace these because these are, these'll take care of it.
Yeah, great.
Eventually we'll have them, so that we can redo all of the meters electronically.
I'll have to do that.
Do so much labor savings on it.
If there's no open parts of these, it goes through an ultrasonic, reads it. So if anybody tampered with it or disconnects it or anything, you put the machine on it, the guy said you come right here and take care of it, so...
So it can't get damaged from water?
No.
Uh...
No. The other ones have a turbine with a chamber inside to spin, sometimes it'll get a little dirt and it'll stop them.
Right.
These don't have any chambers.
Got your report, please?
Here, it's your permission warrant.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the warrant?
Make a motion to approve the warrant, with the addition of $2,043.29.
Got the second?
For water meters.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Real call, please?
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee President?
Aye.
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Need a motion to purchase requisition, Champlain Peterbilt, for sum of $1,285.33. These are for a front aluminum wheel, a rear aluminum wheel, and a rear drive tire for the snowplow, used for acting spares, so that in the event that we have a flat tire on the snowplow, we don't have to wait for someone else to come save us on the streets.
Make a motion to pay the purchase requisition?
The sum of?
$1,285.33.
Got the second?
Second. What is the code, Mr. Warren, sorry?
Uh... Count A 5110.2.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, there's two here, there's one for Champlain Peterbilt.
Yeah, I put them, this is a separate, the one on the back, the second one...
Is for steering tire, right?
Is for the steering tire for the front. The last page is the, the last page is the, is the quote for the first page of the requisitions.
Okay, so we're getting the steering tire from one location and the...
Drive tire from either.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
That's the only place that you could get this same tire in a state contract.
You knew that question was coming, right?
Yeah, and I'm ready for you.
[laughing]
Any other discussion on the, on the first requisition? Real call, please?
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee President?
Aye.
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Come.
Trobley, come. Trobley, ma'am? Trobley, be my side.
I want to say two, that'd be bad.
Need a motion to purchase, purchase the steering tire from Warren Tire. This is on state contract, sum of $756.33.
Motion.
Got the second?
Second.
Any discussion on this purchase? Again, necessary, I think, we really need to have the spare parts in the garage, rather than having to depend on some outside source to come in and do repairs for us.
We had approved doing this last meeting.
Right. We're definitely in a position to be able to do these kinds of things, we're in the past, there's been no window on it.
Yes.
We have a lift that could lift the truck.
We have a jack. Yeah. Any other discussion on this purchase?
Is that the same code?
This is A 5110.2. Real call, please?
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee President?
Aye.
Trustee Trobley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Would that be it for the dollar bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Have the report from the superintendent?
These all have a copy of my work log. You'll probably notice on Prospect, there's a bump in the road.
[laughing] You mean the boulder thing? My son hit his head on the roof the other day.
That means you're driving too fast.
No, the bus, not in my car.
Friday it was fine, Saturday morning, it came up. So I got some barrels and stuff with lights and put them on there. That road, that was dug down 20, 24 inches and it's got fabric on it. I had to buy a big boulder down below. So when the frost is out of the ground, we got marked, we're gonna just cut it and happy day it out.
Have you moved, have you moved the light flasher right in front of it so people will go around it now, or no?
Well, he's got a good sign now.
Because at night, someone called me, I forget who it was, and they said, "Oh my gosh, we just hit the spot on Prospect." They saw the signs.
There's two barrels with flashing lights and there's a sign, big...
Okay, you didn't have flashing lights before on it, so let's do it.
It says bump.
Well, he's had the flashing lights, but it was some people, they'd only come on at dark, you know, I had somebody call me and say they're not working, and it's like my shoulder.
It was right after Mass one day, I got it on last night.
Orange and white cones, your safety, I mean, you know?
Right. Well, you don't anticipate such a major, I mean, that's a major hit, you know? You, you slow down thinking you're gonna hit a little puddle, like, you hit it right. Like George said, back of the bus, all the kids went flying up.
I assume the bus drivers would know that that's...
Yeah, I know.
You can't touch that until the frost is out of the ground and stuff, because of the, there's gas lines and everything all over and the water mains draining that side of the road.
That's gonna be quite a dig to try to...
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to square it off and dig it.
And we'll, and we'll just fill the stone and then pave it, when we do, risk for paving?
Yeah.
Very expensive repair right there.
Oh, I know. It's gonna be a huge load.
If you, anybody goes up by to go to the border on East Service Road and see that stone that's by the hydrant, that's the same stone that come out of that road. It's probably four or five, by five rounds, so...
It was, it was bad.
Yeah, I mean, we went down, it's pure as fabric. Village is all tight, stuff works.
Yes, it keeps moving.
Anyways, I got some lumber and I built some, I did, or crew, we built some sawhorses with, village of Champlain on them, so we're digging, we can have them out, so we have all the people around. I priced the barrels, we are gonna get a couple of them barreled, because the barrels that are there belong to the state, so we have our own.
Okay, we, we look at getting, purchasing some signs too, with...
Yes.
After the budget.
I do have them working signs, I do have that, and I ordered a bump sign today, so we have our own, because that's not ugly there.
Yeah, I know, I mean, so yeah, we're a couple spans. Yeah, it's time you're...
And besides, we fixed, we fixed the water meter, put some water on and stuff, keeping the streets clean.
Larry, what's, number seven, what's, what was that, the proof?
That's the big drain pipe that comes down from the clarifier to drain back into the, where the RAS pumps are.
Oh, okay.
And if the, if it's a little bit, the water will stay here and it'll freeze, and it'll freeze in that, in the elbow. Put the salamander on it, let's go.
And so you're cleaning the wastewater treatment plant? Sure that was a...
Yes, I had some community service kids, so we all got together, need it right up.
Good, good.
So the blowers, I emailed the guy back for the blowers for the wastewater treatment plant, I'm just waiting to hear back from them.
From the turbines?
Yes.
Okay.
And keeping things going.
Yeah, your, your share of issues, I see a motor, you have a bum starting motor too?
Yes, Saturday morning, when I started, it wouldn't start, so Terry was out saying it, so I came back, got the book, and I went, I called Drew's, because the other one was closed. He said check the fuses, so I checked all the fuses, the other fuses, what it was, the guy went back up after, and the cable on the starter, it was tight, but it was just loose enough where it didn't have good contact, so they tightened it up and it's working fine.
Perfect. Well, I commend you and your crew on the various job duties that you, you take care of, and really jackable trades, and they do a lot for us.
Wear many hats, don't they?
Yes, they do, and I appreciate it.
Anything else for Larry? Do the correspondence, please?
Correspondence from County Champlain Water or Wastewater Committee regarding meeting scheduled for January 24th, 2012 for east-west service road sewer, water sewer district. Letters to Samuel Taylor, border logistics regarding code violation of the car at 25 Locust Street. Correspondence from Palmanis, Champlain Mobile Home Car, thanking the board for their consideration of a sewer credit for 20 in Meadow Lane.
I think that was the first time.
It was, we should mention that.
First time, you know, since I've been on this board, that we got a thank you note from someone that we helped with their water. You know, it was kind of a nice surprise to, to read that letter from this gentleman.
You wanna write a thank you note back to the thank you note, because it really was so nice.
Very appreciated.
Yep.
Correspondence from State of New York Office of Attorney General regarding local ethics, laws, and Board of Ethics, and response from the village. Information is quote from Small Business Energy Efficiency Program regarding lighting for the office garage complex. Consultant consultation report from Department of Labor regarding results of water plant inspection regarded, or requested by Barry Sorel, Superintendent Sorel. Correspondence from New York State Electric and Gas regarding pre-training for natural gas emergencies. Correspondence from Clinton County Historical Association regarding Clinton County Civil War, says Quentri, Pacentrial Heritage Project. Email from Jason O'Connell regarding invoice for demolition of this building at 93 Church Street. 2012 water sample schedule and training information from Clinton County Health Department. Two thousand twelve water sample schedule and training information from Clinton County Health Department.
Any discussion on the correspondence? There are a couple here that I would like to bring up under new business. Uh, old business, TSA meter, nothing near the town, still like water district on the east and west service road. New business. Let's start with the easy one first. Uh, you've been copied with, you've been copied with some, uh, a notice from the Chamber of Commerce about the purchase of some banners. The War of eighteen twelve. Banners, and they are, and they are sixteen feet long and fifty-four inches wide. Uh, if you look at the example.
We got a copy of that.
You didn't get a...
No, we got a copy that they wanted, the list of all the, those who served the Civil War.
These are banners that the Chamber of...
Well, I hand this up. There's all three of them. And this is one of them. Now, we're in Sis Plattsburg, uh, that will be changed to Champlain.
Which one?
Any of them.
Oh, any of them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, gotcha.
That will be changed to Champlain. What I propose is one on each side in the front of this building. Now, there, uh, the banners themselves are about fifty dollars. With the, with the necessary, uh, equipment to attach them to the building, the price goes up another fifty dollars. So, we're talking, I'd like to purchase two, one on each side of this, of this building. Talking an expenditure of around, of two hundred dollars.
Each.
No, hundred dollars.
Hundred each. What about putting one at the, uh, park, uh, at the village? You know, when we had the quad and went the either end of the bridge, we had all the decorations. It looks so nice. And so many people go through there.
Where would we suspend it?
It's gotta come down from something?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh...
Yeah, it's just an asset, so you know what it is?
Sixteen foot long and fifty-four inches wide.
What about the history building?
One foot, one foot there.
Same, same building?
Yes.
Maybe you wanna buy three of that, two for here and one for there.
Well, you could vote Selena.
Well, yeah.
She wants three as well.
Yeah, before you purchase one, you might wanna...
If you could, if you might wanna buy one.
Check to see if she's gonna let you hang it.
Well, we might let her know that she might want to get one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh...
Exactly, but...
They're nice, they're, they, they look like they're quite nice, you see. There's all three of them there. Uh, there's only one, one here.
What is it? It provides for hanging for, uh...
It must be the, it must be the things to attach them to the wall and then a, a rod going across the top thing. I don't know, we may be able to do it cheaper.
All the times it looks like, I don't see it looks like.
It must have something on the bottom to support the bottom, I would think, being sixteen feet.
I would think so.
I agree.
Yeah, cause once from the quads, we had troubles with the wind and everything. The road, the road, it's...
Well, these are being us to build them.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
But that'd be nice, I mean. Do you want me to, uh, let Selena know about that?
I can, I can send her the email.
Yeah, forward the email. I think she'd be very interested in it. You know, it'd be a great spot for it, right at the bridge. Very quick point.
And it'll, it'll have Champlain on there, War of eighteen twelve. Twice a ten year. I guess what I'm looking for here is a motion to purchase two of them.
Some of them.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Would one of you like to choose?
Where would you take this out of? Is this gonna be out of community beautification?
Yes, yes.
Eighty-five ten point four.
Yep.
Well, I think you're, you were suggesting the two outside?
Yes.
No, no, there's not.
Eighty-five ten point four. Yeah, that one I'm excited.
Yeah, you were suggesting which one?
Those are the three different...
You wanted your two different ones?
Yeah, two different ones.
Cool. Probably these two?
I recommend one and three.
Yeah, I was thinking one and three, two of the water.
One and three.
Yeah.
Take the visual.
Beautiful, sounds good, mate.
This one?
Yeah.
This one. All right. Good job. Uh, number five on your correspondence list. Uh, information. Quote, Small Business Energy Efficiency Program regarding your lighting for the office garage complex.
I see it's updated?
Yes. I had a couple of questions as I was going through this. Had a couple of questions on, on NISIC's contribution and the total cost of, of, uh, of this project. And it really does make a difference. If any of you've had the opportunity to go down to the town, uh, you know, the town meeting room, it is extremely, uh, much brighter, less strain on your eyes. And I think it's, uh, if you, if you look at it, we'll have a return on our investment. After about five years. So, it's a, the gentleman came back up today. I called, left a message. Uh, he walked in about five minutes later. He just happened to be in the village area. And we went through the whole building again. There were a couple he forgot. Hence the changes from, uh, what you have as correspondence and then the update that was, uh, that was in today's package. Our cost will be two thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents. I asked, I questioned, I said, "Do you normally just have these forms and, and then when they change, you just cross them off and pencil in?" Uh, he said, "Yes, that is how, that is how InterPath and NISIC kinda work together." But he was quite, uh, he was, I think he was a little upset because he had forgotten on his initial assessment. I asked on the last page. Uh, again, my question was. Before I sign anything, if approved, before I sign anything, I would like to have, you know, the, a copy here that faces, or that no one is going to question. Where you go crossing out amounts. Uh, he said, "This is the way that it has been done all over the North Country." Uh, he has done three hundred and thirty-nine accounts here in the North Country. So, I had him pencil in, I had a pen, ink in the amount, and initial it. So that, uh, we said this, if it's, if you choose to approve this, uh, I'll sign it, send it back, and then, uh, work should begin very shortly. In fact, you're in.
What's the life expectancy of these?
I would say the life expectancy here is probably eight or nine or ten years.
Just so you know, after June, these lights won't be available.
These lights?
The big forest of lights won't be.
Lights that...
For anybody?
No, they're, they're not gonna be available. You got the small ones.
Yeah.
What takes a lot of power here is that we have a lot of big ballots in the back. Them lights down here since I've been here.
That's why I didn't see any of it, like, how long they'd last, how many hours, cause typically these... Milligan stuff, they'll last forever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm... Might seem to be alright.
Other these?
Mm-hmm. All right, Greg, I would initial next to where he initialed as well.
Yeah.
To make it valid.
Well, I have to, if we approve this, I have to initial it here where it says initial.
Right. But always initial right next to a change. Both parties should have initial there.
Yep.
Reality.
All right, so. Need a motion to participate in this program with a sum of two thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents. Wait a second.
Second.
Any other discussion on this? I think the crew says triangle electric. Uh, you'll notice, I guess I should throw this in. Uh, where it says total project cost, it went from thirty-five sixty-eight to four thousand seven oh seven. That is because we must figure in, NISIC has to figure in the prevailing labor rate. That's why the, the cost, the NISIC contribution has changed, and the amount has changed as well. The labor, the prevailing labor rate, so that's, that was figured. All right, any other discussion?
Just need to mention the code.
Okay, what's the code?
A sixteen twenty point two, building.
A sixteen twenty point... Okay, wait a roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Chombley. Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Correspondence number seven. This is a free, a free offering by NISIC to, uh, deal with natural gas emergencies. It is being offered February twenty-eighth from seven to nine at the NISIC Service Center. Forty-one twenty-five State Route twenty-two, Plattsburg. Uh, space is limited. I would like to, I would like to work out a way to have our Department of Public Works employees attend this meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure on this. I guess I'm asking for your approval to send them. But what I would like to do, is there any possibility of this other, what you and I talked about today?
The only one I haven't talked to is Willie.
Okay.
But they would, they would do the other several costs.
All right, so Larry has talked to the employees about the three hours here, travel time and the two hours of classroom time. Rather than the overtime issue. Working on a, on a comp time issue. That way we save ourselves some, we save ourselves some money with that. Giving comp time rather than the overtime. But I think it's a very important training. Obviously, they come in contact with the gas lines here in the village. And knowing how to handle these emergencies would be, uh, would be extremely important.
I agree, I thought the same with your correspondence. Assuming it would be taken care of.
So, if it's all right with the board, uh, we'll send the crew to this training. And there's also, if you read the second page, uh, we're going to include, include a, uh, information, natural gas basics, static electricity, fire, and industrial complexes. Natural gas main leaks, fires, odoring emergencies, liquefied natural gas. Uh, there's a DVD that's not intended to substitute for the formal training. It's, it's acting as a supplement to NISIC's training program. So, we can use that as a refresher. This will also help us with our insurance, our insurance rates, as well as our safety costs. So, I think this is, uh, I think this is something that we should take advantage of on the twenty-eighth. Okay, all right, so. Uh, do we need a vote on this?
Any motion on it?
Yes, need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, send, improve the training provided by NISIC.
Okay, February twenty-eighth. Any, do we have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, that's next week or next month. War of eighteen twelve, uh, you wanna do the voter registration?
Notice the voter registration day, Village of Champlain, Champlain, New York. Whereas the next general village election of officers of the Village of Champlain will be held on March twentieth, two thousand twelve. And whereas, no person shall be entitled to go at any village election whose name does not appear on the registrar of the election district in which he claims to be entitled to vote. And whereas, it is the duty of inspectors of election to prepare such registrar of qualified voters to the district for which they are appointed. Whereas, section five sixteen of the election law of the State of New York requires that every village hold its registration day with, for each general village election. Now, be it resolved that first, the registration day of the village shall be held on Saturday, March tenth, two thousand twelve. Second, such registration shall be held at the village office eleven oh four, Route nine, Main Street, Champlain, New York, from noon, from twelve noon until five P.M. Third, voting for the forthcoming village election shall be conducted at the village office eleven oh four, Route nine, Main Street, Champlain, New York, on March twentieth, two thousand twelve, between the hours twelve noon and nine P.M. Fourth, at least ten days prior to the registration date, said in this resolution, a copy of said resolution shall be published in official newspaper. The copy thereof shall be posted in at least one conspicuous public place in, in such election district. This resolution shall take effect immediately. At the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Village of Champlain, New York, held on February thirteenth, two thousand twelve, resolution was offered by trustee... Garrett. Garrett seconded by trustee...
Grisenda.
Grisenda, who moved his adoption, and it was duly carried and answered.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody disapprove? Motion carries. All right, let's, if we could.
If we're still on new business, may I call an executive session, a brief executive session?
Yes, you may.
No more than hundred and twenty seconds.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Make a motion to go into executive session? State what it's for. What personality?
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, out of the regular meeting into executive session. All right. Well, we have a couple of minutes. I'd like for you to go over the tentative budget. And I'll hit just a few of the high points.
Can I make a comment before you do that?
Sure, can.
Um, in case all of you don't notice, Greg put in not an increase for the mayor's position, but put in three percent for trustees. I would like us really seriously to consider, I feel that our mayoral rate is a joke for the amount of work. And I would rather see our salaries held this year and what we would have increased given to the mayor's salary.
No, I, I'm fine with what there is.
Okay, so if something happens to you, though, it's, it's a difficult position to fill, Greg. And I know you're fine with it, and I'm fine with staying where we are. I was fine where we were ten years ago, you know, whatever. But the bottom line is the responsibility, the buck falls on you as the mayor. And right now, the salary is just not proportionate to the amount of work. It, it's not appropriate. I don't feel that it's an appropriate salary.
Well...
None of these salaries are appropriate for trustees. I mean, if you look unsure at what other municipalities are getting.
Oh, Greg.
But with that being said, um, I don't think that there's a person sitting at this table that is doing it for the salary. We do it for the love of the village.
But if you look at proportionately to what the mayor's being paid, um, and the amount of work that he's doing, uh, anyway, just my thought.
Oh, thank you, Amy. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with what, uh, with what I'm being recompensed here. And it is, uh, it is a little more work than I had originally planned, but, uh, that's all right. That's okay. We'll, uh, we'll get through it, we'll move on. Our assessment is down about fifty-five thousand. That equates to about two hundred and forty-six dollars less in property taxes. With a drop of twenty-four cents in the tax rate. From four forty-four last year to four dollars and twenty cents per thousand. This year, uh, that is a decrease in revenues of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents. That's with no change in the water and wastewater rates. They will stay the same, as mentioned before, for the second year in a row. before, for the second year in a row. We were able to do this because of our debt reduction, and I applaud you all for this. We paid off our outstanding bonds, we paid off our outstanding loans for equipment, the snowplow was paid for, the loader was paid for. That is a huge reduction and that equated into this twenty-four cent per thousand tax reduction. As we go through this real quick, I left, I left some, some more funds. If we go quickly to the street maintenance page, A fifty-one ten. Notice that A fifty-one ten, point four, point four, five, road surface repairs, our last budget had this at forty thousand, I increased this to sixty thousand, so that we make sure that we have the cushion that we will need to repair Church Street as well as the other projects. I left extra money, or put more money in personal services, snow removal. I really feel that we have an unusual winter and next winter, the potential is that we are going to need more of the snow removal services. You'll see some reductions and some additions over last year. Under the, under the A seventy-one ten, parks, I increased that from twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars in next year's budget, in the anticipation that we're going to need some extra funds to put a black, or to put a playground down on Main Street. And also, some blacktop for the wreck area will come out of this account. Hopefully, we can get most of the playground taken care of by grant funding. There are a couple organizations out there that it's all they do is fund these playgrounds. I really would like to see something downtown for the, for the children in this community I think is necessary. I think we should use that land down there to provide some youth oriented places for them to go. The library requested forty-three hundred dollars. If I remember correctly, we were increasing the library donation about two hundred dollars every year, so I, instead of four hundred, I increased that by two hundred, from thirty-nine hundred to forty-one hundred. Under eighty-four, or eighty-five forty, drainage, I increased that to, from fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. I really think that on Church Street, we're going to have some extra expenditures with the grates and the frames that we're going to need to work on to get that street as effectively as we possibly can. Under eighty-five forty, point four, backfill, crush stone, we're going to need an increase there, I moved that from five hundred to fifteen hundred. We're going to need some backfill to do the sides of the streets, as well as some stone on the sides of the streets.
Is that going to stop?
Is that what?
Is it not today?
I think so, yeah, yeah. At least Larry thinks so, so. I think that, I think that just about does it for the water, or for the general fund We need to repair or we need to, to purchase at least one spare water pump, or well pump, excuse me, well pump, so that we can have that to maintain the well systems that we have. We have three wells, we're pumping out of two.
Correct.
And I would like to have one spare well pump, so that we don't have to, we don't have to be shut down there for, in that event, if it should happen. I just would like to be prepared.
And those two pumps are new, right? That we have in there now?
Yes, correct.
Right, okay. How many warrant, warranty on it?
What's that?
Warranty on them?
Yeah, they're, they're like a, a ten-year warranty, the last one's lasted twenty years.
All right.
The water needs so hard.
And again, we'll be able to look at those as we clean those wells again this year.
Right. Well, my only concern is getting a water pump with that kind of warranty, so close to having brand-new ones, is our warranty will be used up before we even use it. And would it be antiquated? That's my only concern with.
Is it from time of purchase or from time of installation?
Probably from time of purchase.
That'd be my only concern with going ahead on something like that.
As long as they have it there, because they have it in stock when this one goes down, we can get it, so we know we got it.
Just so we have the money in the budget for it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm all for that, making sure the money's there. Okay.
All right, F eighty-three forty. Under repairs, a significant increase there, from five to thirteen thousand. I anticipate that we're going to need some extra funds as we, and we have talked briefly about this at the last board meeting, if we are going to do something about the pressure issues on Prospect Street, we will need some extra funding there to, to deal with those issues. And in regards of that, or to that, I will sit down with the village attorney and come up with a, come up with a law, if the village board so desires, to deal with the pressure issues on Prospect Street. We'll have to have a local law if we decide that for those customers that are, that are dealing with pressure issues, who do not have significant pressure as per the health department, we can come up with a program, perhaps it's been suggested that we, that we no longer get a service fee from those customers for water, which will be, what, twenty-four?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven dollars a quarter, so it comes out to just a little over a hundred dollars, while they maintain their pumps and their systems, and it helps them pay for their electricity to run the pumps and et cetera. But we really, as was stated here, I believe, last meeting, this has been a troublesome problem over the years, and I think this board is ready to address it. I think I mentioned that the cost of the tax, or the tank cleaning last year was about three thousand dollars. That will be saved if the DPW crew will undertake that mission themselves, now that they have the training and we have the equipment. We still need to purchase a couple more pieces of equipment, for example, a forty-foot ladder has to be purchased so that we can get down inside that tank. The well cleaning, we are waiting for a quote on that.
Correct.
You got it.
Did you say that?
I didn't ask.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It was twenty-three hundred dollars per well, but he charged us the same as he did last time.
So it's twenty-three hundred per well?
Per well. Sixty-nine.
I asked him to send it, but I didn't see it.
And again, cleaning those wells, flushing them out, really does make a huge difference in the pump life, as well as the product that we are providing for our users. So dealing with Prospect Street becomes a big issue. Equipment, well pump, purchasing a well pump and piping, we're going to hold off on that. I had put eight thousand dollars for that, but that can remain there until such a time as we need it, and we can purchase it, at least we'll have the money in the budget for it. Just trying to look ahead and make sure that we have what we need here, so that we can be effective and save some money. I think that's it for water.
Does anyone mention about the bonds?
Oh. Dead service, yeah, F ninety-seven ten. Notice that we budgeted twenty-five thousand and the line below that, point seven, the interest on this loan is almost the same as what we are paying in principle. So if it is possible in the next, in the next tax year, and we pay these, we pay this when?
April.
In April, we pay this in April. What I would like to do, or what I'm proposing that we do, is we find twenty-five thousand dollars in this year's budget to make another payment on the principal, so that we can knock this back, an extra payment every year, we'll knock it back a year. You know, to pay on this until twenty twenty-seven, with the principal and an interest payment almost the same to me is, is, is not cost effective.
How much do we still owe on this? Pay up on that and the pay up on Church Street.
Church Street paid. All the bonds and water are paid.
Is this our only one left? The church we paid off, so we started again.
Yep.
Okay.
Vicious cycle, isn't it?
It's a house.
Probably I'm going to have to.
On Church Street.
No, we're not going to have to buy.
The water project, one is three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and the other is forty-eight thousand.
What was the amount of the original?
One was seven, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand and the other was a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred.
In what year did we start this?
This is the one we're paying five point something percent interest.
Five point seventy percent.
When we start the new plant?
Hasn't.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
If we're, what's your opinion?
We're not up to twenty twenty-seven.
It's going to knock it down.
Yep. Well, we'll make this payment with the, with the principal and the interest payment, and then another principal payment.
Principal payment, right.
To knock it back. And I think this, as long as we watch our funds, you know, especially the water funds, because we can't take from the general fund or we can't take from the wastewater fund to pay this.
Well, which we take from the.
We can take it from the water fund.
Yeah, and I think it's in better shape.
It's in, it's in pretty good shape now, as long as we keep it that way. And I think this, I think you've, you've done a great job in financing these issues. The telemetry system will be paid off March two thousand twelve, that will be one less that we'll have to worry about in the next, in the next budget year. Under the wastewater fund, insurance costs were significantly high for flood insurance, we're taking care of that. Don't remember where we made changes here, except there's no increase in the wastewater And the way it worked out from, from one budget year to the next, we had to, we had to take thirteen thousand, four hundred and seven from the general, from the sewer fund.
Twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars is the difference between our revenues and our expenditures, but like we've done in the past two years, we need to use fund balance to cover the difference, rather than increase the sewer costs.
They were copied with the revenue sheets as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so you see that the fund balance in the wastewater fund is, is, is very healthy?
Yes.
We have exceeded our revenues from the wastewater services, being handled by the wastewater plant. I up that from ten, twenty thousand. I think we'll have no issues, from a revenue standpoint, we'll have no issues of paying head and out as well, and going over that amount, but I just wanted to be cautious. Last year it was ten thousand, I think we even, almost, we were close or over a hundred thousand, from the outside, outside vendors coming in, using our wastewater plant to, to deal with there. So increase that, because they don't know how long Wyatt is going to continue to haul their product to our wastewater facility. So basically, we'll be doing, we'll be dealing with the private, there's two or three private ones, other private ones that we were going to be dealing with. It's a very conservative budget, I think it'll work for us. I'd like to thank the ladies for, for helping here, huge help in terms of where things go, all these numbers still be puddling, and you have, you have the weight, or you have the revenue sheets, so that you can peruse them. We can send, we can send this information, tentatively, we can send this information to the comptroller's office before the end of February to achieve that, satisfy that mandate, another unfunded mandate, take care of that, and then we'll bring this back to you. We'll bring this back to you in April, well, it'll be there March as well, but in April for approval, so that we can move on to the next year's budget.
If we scrutinize this closer, if we have any suggestions, will we have a chance to make those adjustments?
Sure. Yep. We can talk about them under new business at the, at the March meeting.
Greg, can I ask you?
Sure.
Two quick questions, without getting into a lengthy discussion, but back on Prospect Street, two different things.
Yes.
I know we're budgeting sixty thousand dollars for road repairs.
For Church Street.
For Church Street, but with the boulder that we're now looking at on Prospect Street and the, you know, the thoughts of having to cut that, dig that and repave it so that we can maintain that road, do you think that that needs to be upped?
We also have fifty thousand dollars in chips.
Chips fund.
Yeah, I know that, that's, Church is probably a, either.
It's just.
It's great.
It's just a concern I have.
Yeah. Well, you give us a conservative guess?
Wait a minute.
You have to have that fixed this spring, which will come out of this year.
We budgeted, we budgeted sixty thousand for next year, okay?
Yes.
This year has forty thousand dollars in it, that he's only used very minimal out of it. So you're going to have that forty and that sixty, which is a hundred, plus you're also going to have fifty thousand from chips. So we're actually going to have theoretically a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year.
I really believe that we're going to use up a lot of that on Church, but.
I do, that, that's just a concern of mine, is that.
How much do you think?
Unless.
To fix that prospect, that thing?
It's a lot.
It's going to be all, mostly in-house, with our equipment, and it's going to be the cost of the tar, I mean the county of tar for us, to make sure it's pat good and tamped.
And how about if we do end up putting a turnaround on.
Recovery.
Recovery, okay.
That, that was just a concern.
Yeah.
On that one, and my other concern, again, on Prospect Street, I know you're talking about getting rid of service fees at about a hundred dollars a year for those individual homes. What is the cost that these people incur for these pumps? Per, per home?
About four hundred.
Yeah, about twenty-two dollars.
Probably, probably closer to six, but you know.
Yeah, by the time.
With the.
Yeah, by time of installation and stuff.
With the pressure, pressure tank and everything. Yeah, what are you bringing up?
Replaced every eight, ten, twelve years.
Yeah, probably.
Well, what I, my, my concern is that if, if all we're looking at doing is giving them a decrease in service fees, to me, it's not adequate.
Well, I, I had mentioned it to Greg once about possibly, uh, some sort of a small refund to, to go towards initial investment. I don't think we wanna start buying the equipment, though.
No, we're not gonna buy any equipment.
I don't wanna give to that whatsoever.
And we're not gonna be responsible for the maintenance of the equipment.
Right.
That's why we were theoretically, if this is, if this is what you wanna do, uh, take that service fee off as a replacement, as a way that they can use, use this to replace the pump as needed.
It helps cover their maintenance. I think what Kim's suggesting, what I, probably what I had talked to you about, is if possible, we could give up some sort of a, of a dollar amount refund, a one-time refund.
Have to be very, very careful, and I think that'll open up a.
Yeah, 'cause if you're doing, it's, what, a hundred a year?
A bag of worms there.
Roughly?
From other consumers as well.
And they last eight, ten years, you know, so they're making.
I, I understand your point.
They're the consumers, you know.
Have to suffer through that low pressures.
I haven't had to install that kind of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I pay the same water bills.
Yep. Good question.
So, let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get closer, just to discuss it in detail.
I think you best let us talk to your attorney and find out what you can do.
Well, that's what we'll do.
Because you have to pass a local law. And whatever we decide has to be to the health department.
That's right, health department, we're the final arbitrator in this one.
Because it mandates that they have a minimum of twenty pounds of pressure.
And what are they getting now?
What's that?
What are they getting now?
Uh, Kay is at the bottom of the hill, thirty-one pounds, and then Howard Desatelle's twenty-six pounds. Uh, so it starts, it starts, uh, like, uh, ash lines, uh.
So some of them are working on the same.
Some have fourteen, some have fifteen.
Now, from there up, do they all have pumps?
No, I, I went to most of the houses, some people weren't home, but I'm, I have a card, and I'm writing down what they have, how much pressure they have, so we have a, something legit to go by.
That, that's what the only questions I had, Greg.
One more, fine.
Alright, any other business before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.